It's 6 o'clock, time to order this meeting. Call this order. Call this meeting to order. Please stand for budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation.
I haven't heard anything from Max, so. All right, council. You have the agenda before you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Is there anybody here who wishes to make any statements regarding anything not on the agenda? Arlen, I think Kristin had her hand up first, so I'll start with her. You have three minutes. Well, you raised your hand.
I'm supposed to pretend you don't know my name.
Okay. Ma'am.
Okay. So, this is maybe more for Cory than anything, but we have a couple sections around our town that I believe could potentially be very dangerous, and I'm surprised they haven't caused more of an issue at this point, intersections around town. So, there's four of them. In case you want to write them down, I'll try to go slow. That's fine. Monroe and North Jefferson. Monroe and North Washington. Broadway and South Washington. And Broadway and South Jefferson. So, apparently Jefferson and Washington are our problem children here in town. The big one would definitely be Broadway and South Washington. I'm sure many of you have come up to that, especially if you're on Broadway. You cannot see around the register's big old bush they've got out front, and the cars parked eating at Sharky's or going into the store there. So, during business hours, of course, the, that's, let me back up. All of these intersections are mentally affected during business hours. I just implore all of you to drive around, go to any of these intersections during the day. Joel, your shop is right down.
I couldn't agree with you more on all four of those.
On two of them. And so, I drive them pretty frequently due to where I work at the mental health center and because of where I live on South Chestnut. And, yeah, I'm terrified I'm going to get my car beat up, or I'm going to beat somebody else up, and I really, really don't want that to happen. So, it'd just be nice if, you know, Chief could go out, see what's going on there, or some, something like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Arlen, three minutes.
I hadn't planned on coming tonight until I saw in the paper they were going to talk about the recycling program. Then I saw it was also about the budget. I think there's some things that I would like to address even beside that, bigger picture, some visionary things versus sight. It wasn't long ago before we had to have a discussion with the city management about who was responsible for the alleyway where they dug it up. I approached Mr. Shinstock, and he said, "Well, that's your responsibility." So, I said, "Okay. If that's true, I want to know about it, and I want to have it in writing so that I don't get in trouble for doing it." Then I went to the city manager, and he didn't even know who it was. He said, "I'll have to talk to my department heads." He came back a couple weeks later and gave me a letter. He said, "Well, it's really not set in code anywhere, but since we tore the gas line up, we'll repair it." When people don't understand what the role of the city is versus the owners of property in the city, that signals a huge problem to me. It's been that way for the past 30-some years in Iowa. Nobody knows and wants to take charge, be held accountable for actions that need to be taken care of. The population of Iowa is declining. You want to know why? It's the same as everybody says. Corruption. It's at all levels. Law enforcement, city police, it's everywhere. If you'll take me when I got about 20 seconds left, I'd appreciate it. We have a need for good visionary people in our city. There's a difference between vision and just plain sight. I would ask you to become visionaries for the future. I think Iowa has a great potential. You look at the history of it. I was at a meeting the other night, and we talked about it with Thrive.
30 seconds left.
Thank you. We can go forward, and we can have a great town here, even though we may not agree on certain things, we can work together. With that said, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, no one else will move on. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, didn't see you.
Heidi.
Hi, Marcia.
Hi. I'm Marcia Davis. I'm from Thrive Allen County, and I'm here to share with you the ideas and thoughts that came out of our community conversation that we held last Tuesday, August 5th, here in Iowa. So, at these, we did this one a little different this year. We broke up into small groups around the table. We had the big sticky notes, and we asked three questions, and then the tables talked about it in their small groups, like six to eight people. Then we came back together and shared what was discussed. So, the three questions we asked were: What gives you pride in the community? What are the opportunities that we're missing in our community? And where do we find barriers, or where are the needs in our community? So, for the first question, the things that were said were like our town square, our daily newspaper, school, recreation opportunities, the college, recycling, hospital, library, bolus, small-town feel, the mental health center, and the potential of the state park that's opening soon. Those were all things that gave pride. One other thing that they said that gave pride was that the city saw the value in investing in the Splash Park and the Cedar Brook housing development. So, then the second question, what were the opportunities that we are missing? One of them that we talked quite a bit about was communication between all the different boards, like communication between the city council, the county commissioners, the college board, the school boards, just so that there can be transparency in what everybody's working on, and maybe we can help each other out instead of each doing their own individual work. Another opportunity that we're missing is housing and all the houses that are in disrepair, the new housing that we need, no city ordinances on rentals, and that sort of thing. Another opportunity was also recycling. We need more retail on the square, evening transportation, sidewalks in the community, shade around the square, especially on the side with the stores, the outside side, younger people involved in our community, a central location where announcements could be made or people could see what events and what's going on, and the three schools that are empty right now. And then we talked about where do we find barriers, or what are our needs, how can, what do we really need to work on? And we had all kinds of ideas, of course. One of them was, how about a city or county administrator instead of commissioners? Youth leadership is another, also again discussed. City council having at large instead of, okay, I'll be done? Oh, I'm sorry.
Understood.
Well, then, read the paper, because there's a very nice article in the paper that lists all this. I'm sorry.
She also forgot the, we have the potential to have the world's largest monopoly board on the square.
Yeah.
That's right. Thank you, Marcia. Anybody else? All right. Consent agenda. Any questions?
No, I was going to speak. Catch your time? It'll be less than three minutes.
You haven't made a motion yet, so how long you need? Three minutes enough?
Two and a half minutes.
I'll hold you to that.
Less than two and a half minutes. You can cut me off. You can. I just wanted to share something about the recycling thing. Do you know?
It's on the agenda.
Huh?
It's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda.
Oh, you don't mean I can't talk about it on this? That's fine, then.
Not until the topic comes up.
I'll wait. I just wanted to talk about it.
Okay. All right, moving on. Consent agenda. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. This is for the setting the hearing for the budget.
So, this is just the annual, right, Roxanne?
Sorry. I didn't want to leave without it. Yes, the annual setting of the public hearings for the R and R and for the annual budget. And you'll see attached is what got published.
I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing for the proposed revenue-neutral rate for the 2026 budget at the city council meeting on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Riverside Park. You probably need two motions here, yeah?
Yep. Motion made in second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will make a motion to set a public hearing for the proposed 2026 budget at the next regular city council meeting on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. following the hearing for the revenue-neutral rate at Riverside Community Building.
I will second again.
Motion made in second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, roundtable nuisance ordinance.
And Mayor, this is brought to you, well, kind of in line with what has been mentioned during public comment, our nuisance ordinance doesn't have a lot of teeth. It's been stated at this meeting. Chase said it, that our ordinance doesn't have any teeth. Well, this gives it a whole lot of teeth. And if you want to know specifically, section, section eight, abatement from section 10, the hearing, the abatement allows the city to go and clean a property that is considered a nuisance. Right now, we don't have that authority and haven't had that authority for as long as that order is, the reg has been in effect. That section eight gives the city the authority, and then section 10, I'm going to do this from memory. Chase, jump in. And Greg, why don't you get up there, too? Is if a person feels aggrieved, they can request a public hearing in front of a governing body. If you want, you can pass it as presented, which is 10 different sections. The meat of it is sections eight and 10, and you can approve those as well. There is one revision staff would like to make. It's on page one, section one, item F. There, it's very specific on abandoned ice boxes and refrigerators. We'd just like to change that to appliances kept on the premises under the control of any person. That's the one recommendation. We'd make change. Again, this is a discussion item. We're not expecting you to act on anything, and we will work at your direction.
So, this could just come back next time with the changes?
Yeah, actually, whatever direction you guys give us, we'll bring it back to the next meeting.
And I do have a question for Greg, and then a couple for our legal. Greg, do we need to add any language as far as what's defined? You've got lumber, rocks, dirt, cans. I know sometimes you run into lawn furniture that really isn't lawn furniture. It's indoor furniture that is sitting outside. Does there need to be anything in the language that would identify any bedding furniture not rated for outdoors?
No, this is just section 101. This is 8-101. The next section is 8-201, which you guys do not have a copy of. We've, it covers just about everything.
It covers all that?
Could be covered.
Okay.
So, we've went through it several times. We think we're adequately covered on anything that may be a nuisance.
Then the abandoned refrigerators that he mentions, is that whole paragraph going to be rewritten? I mean, if you just struck, well, here's my concern. If you leave in there, F as written, and if you leave in there, "Icebox refrigerator not in actual use unless the door is removed," so it almost indicates that, well, I can have the box set there, but if the door comes off.
What Matt had, what I'd like to have that cut down, too, the very first of that paragraph there, if you put appliance in there and just, as Matt read, and then basically you're going to take out the last three-fourths of that whole paragraph to where, "We don't want any appliances in the yard." Whether it's, whether you got that refrigerator plugged in or not, or whether you've taken that door off or not, we don't care. If it's an appliance, we don't want it outside in the yard. We don't want it out on your back porch. If it's an appliance, a refrigerator, a freezer, it's a safety hazard.
I agree with that. I think that clarifies it better.
So, I have a question. With the abatement, how long would we wait? Would we wait the section 10 allows for how long? 10 days? Would we wait the 10 days for them to file a grievance essentially, before we go in and take care of it?
This, we would still continue to handle nuisances the way we've always done it. We would send letters. We would send a second letter, the final letter. We would continue to do that on and on and on. At some point on some of these properties where we have sent letters year after year after year, months and months, it gets to a point that we need to address that property.
When their 10-day period would technically start?
Well, we would do, at that point, we would do a letter, say, "You've got 10 days.
Okay.
If you don't get these things done, we're going to go to the council with a resolution."
So, the council's still going to approve?
You still have to do it. I can't just go and clean up. You guys have.
Just like a condemned property, we still have to condemn it. We have a hearing.
Exactly.
Okay.
I crafted up a checklist for Matt, Cory, and Greg. Can I share that, or they can? Just kind of run it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Okay, section three on page two, complaints, inquiry, and inspection indicates you can do so with two or more persons stating a nuisance exists. Is that, what's the reason for two? Why can't one complaint qualify?
I guess practically speaking, we want to avoid harassment. You know, you have, let's say you have an aggrieved neighbor. You don't want them.
Nuisance after nuisance.
Yeah. You don't want them abusing it. So, if it's a problem, the idea is to, if it's actually a problem, you shouldn't.
Chief of police, fire.
Fire chief.
Health department.
So, you have different avenues, but if it's just someone, just, you're ever, it does require two. But I mean, we can modify that.
That way Greg doesn't get inundated from me regarding John and his front yard.
So...
Just so the council knows, even if we get a complaint, we go verify it. We would never just send a letter because somebody calls up.
And I didn't think you did, and I think you're fair in that sense. It just concerns me that if, you know, sometimes a neighbor can be pretty boisterous, and people won't complain. So, is Greg and the chief of police considered complaining?
Greg can unilaterally.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then the other question I have is on page four in the middle. When we're talking about the city to debate at the end of 10 days, pass a resolution, and then it goes on to read, "The resolution shall further provide that the cost incurred by the city shall be charged," and then it goes on as provided in section 10. Section 10 has to do with hearing, not assessments. Should that be section 11?
It looks like Tyco. Get that first.
Yeah, you're right, Mayor. It's Tyco.
That was one of the questions I had.
I have a couple. So, my questions are in section three and four. So, is there any reason why in section three that, so, the people who can report it are at least two private individuals, any member on the board of health, and then why is it only the head of the police and the head of the chief? Why not just any police officer or any fire, any member of city staff?
Sure. And no one, no one's prevented from going to, for example, Greg and saying, "Hey, we have a problem here." That doesn't like create a bottleneck or anything. Greg can go out and review it himself. It's a statute, and so that language reflects that. Like, probably a shocker to you all, I don't know what an icebox, I mean, I know what it is, but it's called an icebox. But that's the language.
Wow.
Yeah, we can tweak that however you want. That just reflects what the state.
Chase, another question with that. Who is our board of health?
That's a good question. That's the S E K multi-county.
Health department.
Board of health department.
Okay. So, I think that just needs to be stated there a little bit more clearly, because until now, I didn't know that.
Which I'm on, so then I can do it.
Oh, no. That's a common.
Well, and the reason I think it's important is because that, it looks like these elements in section three are required for the right of entry in section four.
So, public officer again refers to Greg.
Right.
Being nuisance that they're informed by either two citizens or one of these three individuals listed here in the middle of it.
But like, if, but the way that that's written, if, like, just say a regular police officer reports to Greg, not the chief, but if a regular police officer reports it to him, then he doesn't have that right?
Yeah.
If I read that correct?
Yeah, I, it's a good question.
Because this authorizes him to, and that's the other.
That there's anything that necessarily prevents, like I said, Greg from unilaterally going out there and reviewing these things? So, if, you know, you call.
Well, it does, because the way that this is written is he has to observe it. So, if he isn't the one who observes it, then he doesn't have that right.
Well, but if Greg, if Greg goes out there and observes it, then that's not a problem.
But if he, but if he's got to go onto the property to observe it, and if he can't go onto the property, to, I mean, that's a catch 20.
If I receive, if I receive a complaint, then I have the authority to go onto the property and verify the nuisance. And we, right of entry is in our code as of right now. It's in section 101.
Currently.
We can clean that language up if we need.
I trust your judgment, but I think we might want to take a look at that, like, how that rolls.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed. I do agree with Greg. What section?
101. The one we're going to replace with this one.
Yeah.
Right of entry is in there.
But this would take some of that right away, the way that it's written.
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably something we want to go back.
I mean, there's a lot of statutes and ordinance written that says the city clerk will do this, but anyone that works under me is a designee of me, so therefore is acting as a city, as that office. So, I think when you're saying the chief of police or the fire chief, if they're employees, they're acting underneath that as the fire chief, as the police chief. They're doing their duties as directed by that person, because in statute, there's a lot of times it says the city clerk, but I...
It's really the office or the department.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Roxanne's right, but I mean, just if we're going to repeal this, replace it, we might as well come about.
Those are my only questions.
Good. Anybody else? I think that gives plenty of direction.
I'm fine moving forward as we go around. I'm fine moving forward with those changes, so.
All right. Thanks, everyone. All right. County-wide recycling. John, would you like to come up and sit with us?
Got an open seat.
Come on up.
Got one on your side.
County Commissioner John Brocker was appointed by the county commissioners to represent the county so we can have this discussion about recycling.
First, I want to thank John for being here.
Yes, absolutely.
And the county for agreeing to the meeting.
I'm Dan Davis. I've been working with the recycling really since we came into town, since it started out as a Rotary program, and I was a member of the Rotary, and saw it get ramped up from there, and have been trying to promote it and make sure that it stays as viable as possible since Rotary decided to not be involved in it for just various reasons. But it was, I, it's still important for us to remember that it was Rotary's vision, as Mr. Arden would say, that got this ball rolling in the first place, and would like to see the city and the county have that same kind of vision, being able to see that offering recycling is good for the community. It's good for the county. It's good for the landfill. It's good for everybody involved. And have always felt that the best time to take advantage of that is not wait until you have to. In other words, don't wait until, you know, the state says, "Okay, this is, this landfill's done." I've seen communities scramble after that, starting at the county level and working its way down to the various city levels. And a little bit of foresight, a little bit of energy and effort, I think, will go a long, long way. Since we last came and talked, we have sent, how many pounds was it? 39,000 pounds of cardboard out?
I'm sorry, what's that?
How many pounds of cardboard have we sent out since we last came and talked? Has it been two, two loads?
Yeah, we're sending a semi-load of cardboard every month. It's 50,000 pounds.
So, we've, we've taken care of probably 150,000 pounds of cardboard. It's not going into the landfill. We've taken care of, well, they just recently baled aluminum, and that was 22 totes of aluminum. And imagine your totes are, you know, K-square that high, completely full of aluminum cans that weren't around town and will not end up in the landfill. The same way with plastics, probably at least 60 to 100 totes of plastic, same size of containers, are not going into the landfill. Same way with tin cans, same way with glass. It's, it's a tremendous effort, all done by volunteers. And the very first volunteers we need are the people who are at their homes and say, "Yes, we want to recycle. This is important to us." And I think we have proved over, just in the time that I've been here, since 2019, that people in Iowa and across the county will absolutely support recycling. And that's, you know, without any trash blowing at the landfill or fires, you know, starting at the landfill. That's just because they know it's the right thing to do to ensure the viability and the health of our county and our communities. And so, I would like to ask any other folks who are here to support, any insights that you have. Now it's time to come up and share those.
I'd like to do that first. I've had rumors that I was running for city commission, and I've told them, "Yes, I'll do it if Don Hauser does. Otherwise, I'll come here at different times when I need to visit with you." She's got me being, I thought I'd be the worst one.
No, I like seats opening, so you can definitely run.
No, really, I would like to just share some things from being older about governance, because I've been involved in governance a long time. Do you know when they put in the speed limit in Kansas? Was it popular or unpopular? It wasn't popular, but Kansas, it was put in. But Kansas, it was put in 1957. Guess what the speed limit was before then? Whatever nerve you had, just be reasonable. If I thought 90 was reasonable... I've actually ridden 90 to 100 miles an hour on a gravel road. I've had friends that got killed doing that, too. One was 14 years old from Mountain City, Kansas. I was in Lynn County. I'm a newcomer around here. In 1957, they changed it to 70. And then 60 at night. That was it. And in '74, President Carter slid it down to 55 for a while. What I'd like to say is everything I'm telling you, nothing was popular. It wasn't popular. But it was the right thing to do. It was the right thing to do. I remember when they put in seatbelts. I don't know if all of you do or don't. See, I remember, you know, we didn't have these phones like you got now. Mine was a crank phone. There's one in my office down there if you wanted to look at it. It's the actual crank phone like we used as kids. And I'd call and say... My cousin, Edith Post is her name, from Mapleton. I'd say, "Edith, get me through. Can you get some of them off this line?" That was my phone line when I was a child. I'd like to have you have the courage to work on this. I was always taught that when things go bad, you work harder. And when things are going good, work harder, keep it going good. And I just... Now, if... Backseat seatbelt, you have to wear one of those? You do, but they can't stop you for that one unless you misplace yourself in the law. Then they can give you a whack because you didn't have it on. But that's in that. And you say, "What's this got to do with recycling?" Everything I'm talking about wasn't funded to be have done. I don't know if any of you have heard of Bob Dole. Bob Dole, when I was a city commissioner, he and a guy by the name of Tom Hanks, they thought we should handicap road sidewalks. That was terrible. I just can't tell you how many people squealed. They said, "That's an extra cost. We've got wheelchairs. We have inner Horhine's boy." Guess how we got him up the stairs at school? We all got in a wheelchair and we lifted him in. They all lifted him up. That was our job. That's the way he was handled. They don't have to do that now because of not just that, but things like that. That wasn't popular. You think it should have been. So, now it's common sense. Guess how we got rid of our trash when I was a kid in Lynn County, Kansas? What would you guess we did?
Burned it.
No, you couldn't burn it. You can't burn an old refrigerator that's an icebox. Can't burn it. See, it's got insulation, it's got stuff in it. We threw it in... We threw it in a ditch. We didn't bury it. Heaven's sake, no. We threw it in ditches. I know an individual in this county that was visiting here and was renting some property. And he filled the ditch full of stuff. And the owner threw a fit and made him go out and dig it up and haul it off. And you see, did they do the right thing when they told us we had to quit doing that? Or was that the wrong thing? Was it popular? Do you think... You know, we had old cars that didn't run so fast. Didn't do so good. We had... Do you ever remember changing your tire on the way to town? I remember that more than once. We had a little hand jack and all this, and we tightened it down. We lit a match. We got done, we bum, 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 bum. That's how we went to town. You didn't have to do that lately, have you? But we did. And the only reason what's it got to do is recycling. Here's what it's got to do. When you know something is right and you know how hard it is, you have made nudge people to recognize that it is so good. But I beg you to work harder, work harder to figure out a way to augment this process that they're doing.
Thank you, Gary.
I just want to say g'day. I'm not from around here, but I have recently become an Iowan. And I'm mighty proud. I just want to tell you about the recycling that we have back in Australia. Now, in Australia, we in fact didn't accept recycling terribly well. But eventually, we got our heads around it. And can I tell you, every town in Australia, every council supplies every home with a recycling bin with... On the lid tells you what can go in that bin. And consequently, it's divided. You can put paper in one side. You put glass and your tin in the other. And every week, they come around. They collect those bins. And so, therefore, every household is recycling. That's stuff that isn't going into landfills. That's rubbish that gets treated again and repurposed. We have recycling centers because at home, we still pay deposits on plastic bottles, glass bottles. And so, we have cash for cans centers. And so, you can go there. You can put your cans through a machine, and it'll give you a receipt. You can swap that for money. You can put your bottles through another machine and get your receipt, swap it for money. So, it's a great way. It's a great incentive for people to collect those things and take them to those recycling centers. And pretty much every community has got one or one near it. So, it's really easy to get there. Kids, of course, are just thrilled with the idea because they have an opportunity to get some cash for their pocket money. And so, they're constantly collecting your cans and your drinks. In fact, if you're out somewhere and you've got a drink, they're following you in the hopes that you might give them that thing to take and recycle. So, can I just say, although we didn't want to accept recycling, we thought it's a whole heap of hooey. We didn't want to play with that. We did indeed embrace it. And everyone in our country recycles and recycles well, including car tires and truck tires. We turn those into, you know, sort of a rubberized grounding for playgrounds. So, little kids, if they fall off the... I don't know what you call slippery dips here. And swings. But if they fall off, they just bonk onto the rubber, not cement, you know, like we did when we were kids, you know. So, you'd stumble home with a cracked head or whatever because you came off the slide. And consequently, we're constantly making stuff out of that, you know, sort of outdoor furniture and so forth. It all gets repurposed. So, I'd love to see you get involved with this and encourage every household to recycle. My husband, Steve, and I, as I say, we came here about eight weeks ago. We finally turned up in Iowa. We've been coming for a little while. One of your fellows, Max Grundy, is a friend of ours and encouraged us to come here. And I'm glad he did. And consequently, we volunteer out at the recycling center and delighted to go out there and help sort that into reusable stuff. So, I can only encourage you to support it.
That's a tough act to follow. I'm Vicki Curry, and I just wanted to say I don't live within the city limits. We live outside, but still within the county. And I think it's a great idea to have the county and city work together because the landfill is affected by all of us, whether we're in the city or whether we're in the county. And I was just looking up today on Google, of course, you know, the best place to go to find out information. And it said that 94% of U.S. citizens have access to recycling. So, that should make you think that this really isn't a... Just something to think about. It's something to really put 100% into because it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
I might give a little bit of a summary from the council's viewpoint, from what I recall. We're here today because the council pretty much gave a consensus that it was agreed that recycling is a good thing to do. It's just what type of a recycling program? Do you start at baby steps? Do you dive in and do similar to what Burlington's doing? We're here with the county. I believe the county's committed that they would provide an employee if the city would imply... Provide an employee. And I believe the consensus of the council was we'd be willing to look at that ourselves. So, sort of where we left off was we agree that there should be a recycling program. We agree that we could provide an employee. But it was also the consensus of the... Voiced by council members that a countywide definitely would be the best program. So, how do we get to that point? And that's what we're hoping to start here is how do we arrive at getting a recycling program that works not just in the city of Iowa, but for all communities in our county? And so, John, I don't know if that still stands that you guys had talked about an employee and if you have any idea what the county's commitment might be. But that's sort of it in a nutshell, where we're at.
The county's somewhat in favor of this, but I think we've got some questions that have never been answered. We never have a layout of how this is really going to work. I've got a few questions here. If one of you wants to answer them, stand up to the mic because I've had them deliver... I've had several calls driving back from Topeka today over this deal, going, "I was going to be here for the county." So, if somebody needs to step up to the mic and wants to answer questions, you may not like the questions, but you may. I mean, we just need to know some answers to stuff. One of the first questions they are... They're saying, because I hear it's a volunteer-type deal, but one of the first questions they gave me to ask was, "Who's hauling the cardboard to be baled? And how much are they being paid?"
Right now?
Right now.
Well, that's interesting. Because it would be me and one of my employees, and I'm paying him $16 an hour to haul cardboard from the businesses now to bail it.
And who delivers it? Do you guys would have to be the one delivering it to the cycling it at? And what's that person being paid to recycle?
Well, John, we just sell it through a broker.
I understand. You... Don't you squeeze it down like we used to do?
Bail it?
Bail it?
Yeah.
Who's... What's that cost is?
Oh, what's the cost?
Yeah.
Well, I just figure the van hours that... This guy's name is Joe.
And that's what they want to know. What's the man hours costing?
Well, it's all lumped together.
Well, see...
I can tell you... Just tell you, matter of fact, I paid him $8,000 this year so far out of my pocket to do the...
When you sell it to these card... Whoever the dealers are...
The brokers.
Who's the check made out to?
Made out to Allen County Recycling. Okay.
Another question, but I'll follow up with another one first, and then I'll come back to that question. So, out at... Well, let's go to this first. What would an average amount of a load of cardboard be paid? How much for an average?
It depends on what the prices is.
I know. But average it out. I'm not talking highs and lows, you know.
Maybe a little over 2,000 bucks.
And then, when you... Money, like you said, you're paying your people $16 an hour. Is if there's any excess donated to somewhere, school or any place else?
Any excess what?
Money that you have from recycling.
It doesn't... It doesn't cover the cost. Let's put it that way. Now, that's not to mean that Allen County Recycling does not have money in the bank because we do. Because we've also had people be very generous in making donations to make sure that it continues. And we're in the process now of looking around and seeing if there would be a better place, a more suitable building that we could utilize. And we've talked to at least one of the local commercial real estate folks in town. And we've taken a look at one building that probably could work, another one that absolutely wouldn't work. And if we needed to, we could afford some rent. But, you know, the one building, if there could be more than just Allen County Recycling in it to help pay the rent, that would be worthwhile. So, I mean, you know, we're trying to look at all the options and opportunities that are out there. And what we would like to see, John, is the county and the city start to work together to work a solution to recycling and helping citizens see the need and be able to recycle. It's always going to start with each citizen. Those are what I call our first-line volunteers because each person in their own home, they have to say, "Am I going to just throw it out?" And that's really easy in Iowa because you come to pick it up twice a week. Or they say to themselves, "We think it's worthwhile to take the time and the effort to rinse out cans, bottles, make sure they're reasonably clean. Still, you don't have to run them through the dishwasher." Same way with cardboard. Make sure that when you, you know, toss the big box that the new TV came in, don't leave all the Styrofoam and all the plastic and all the plastic bags stuffed in there. Take those out. Make sure you can recycle those when you can. Trash the other stuff. And, you know, if it's cardboard, just make sure it's cardboard. Those are the first people. And it doesn't matter what kind of a system we have. This one is 90% volunteer. And has it worked? Yeah, it's worked. We've kept a lot of stuff out of the landfill. We have extended the life of the landfill. And if nothing else, the recycling efforts made it possible for the guy who was recycling tires, and really wasn't, to be at some place that he could dump his ground-up tires. If... As far as the volunteer efforts, during the time when it was with the Rotary Club, I probably made a mistaken judgment at one time when I allowed Steve, who was gung-ho beyond belief, to keep collecting cardboard far and wide, wherever his hauling of dairy bulls would take him. And he had an empty trailer on the way home. He knew every spot between here, Tulsa, Kansas City, Wichita, and Denver that he could stop and cram that thing full of cardboard. And I would say to Steve, "Steve, you are killing us with all this cardboard." And he said, "Well, what if I just... What if I make sure that anything I bring in, I will bail and process that myself?" I told him, "Yeah, go ahead and do that."[1722.18] I told him, "Yeah, go ahead and do that." And so he did that. Guilty. And probably should have drawn the line a little bit further, firmer with him. But he did it, and when he bailed, and we took, and we, we, we kept as, the closest count as we can, we could. And so he got the money for the cardboard that he brought in, that he bailed and processed that.
Councilman Wells.
I'd like to talk to the council a bit. I'm a bit frustrated with a lot of these talks, because it seems we've been doing this for years, but everything that Allen County Recycling does is not what the city's ever going to touch. We don't touch commercial businesses. We don't touch, everything you're picking up is not in our service district. It's not what we do. Two, the speaker from Coffee County literally said the Burlington rate of recycling was 30%, and that's a free service, correct? So I'm a little hesitant to spend $200,000 a year for 30% of the citizens to do a project. You know, everything you're doing is great, but even if the city does full recycling on the residential side, it doesn't touch what you're doing at all. That's all commercial businesses that are, that we're not going to touch, that we're not allowed to touch, that we don't want to touch.
Cardboard.
Cardboard. We can't pick that up. We can't touch, we don't touch commercial at all.
Well, I mean, you're the city council, right? You're the city council, so.
We cannot with the, I'm not going to.
Because the private, private does not offer recycling. So if we were offered recycling, we could charge them for it and collect money from the businesses, right?
Yeah, that's right.
They wouldn't be in competition.
What I understood is, you're the city council, you could make that decision if you wanted to.
That's exactly right.
You could make that decision if you wanted to. So to say that it's.
But, but at the same time, I have a 30%, I have 30% of the people of Burlington doing this for, on a free service, absolutely free. And that gives me a lot of pause to say, "I'm going to throw," and they're $249,000 minus 80 for a population of about 8,000, meaning I'm going to guess, breaking even, 249 here would be our cost all in. That's a lot of money, though, when you're talking about it. That's 2.5 million over the next 10 years.
There's also a benefit of the landfill not filling up.
I mean, as far as the city goes, as far as the city, just talking about the city.
But, but hold on, I'm, I'm still going with these issues that we have. And now we've moved to a pay-as-you-throw model, and I still don't have a plan out of Allen County Recycling four years later. So, so I've been told pay-as-you-throw, and I have zero stomach for pay-as-you-throw. Those are failed models. Those are going to burden not only the citizens, but we're going to start getting into what I call the birthday tax, the Christmas tax.
Can I ask, why, why did you say it was a failed model?
Because they, I've seen cities do it. Tulsa had one, they abandoned it, because what ends up happening is that people either don't pay for their stickers to go on their trash bags, and then they toss them in their neighbor's trash, or they take their trash and they start, they don't have the money for the stickers, so they just don't throw away their trash that week, or they go and they toss it on the road, or they go to the college or dumpster and they toss them in the dumpsters. But that's not what they do.
There's, there's.
And so I'm just letting you know, I have no stomach for a pay-as-you-throw model. If that's what we're talking about, my answer is no, I'm not entertaining it, I'm being blunt here. I still don't have a good model of what a recycling would look like and where we would take it.
And a budget or anything?
And picking it up is not the issue. I can collect all the recycling in the, in the city fairly easily, probably. It's the next steps that we don't have, and the costs of those are prohibitive.
So, just as a question, how many of the total population? What's the percentage of the population in Iowa that use the swimming pool? Is it 30%?
No.
Is it more? Is it less?
I think those are, I think we're doing apples and oranges here when we're talking about a rec department.
It's a service that is provided, that affects the quality of life, and that's what recycling is too.
And you're trying to draw people to Iowa, not run them away.
I mean, that's, that's, we, and, and one of the things that.
And if we want to talk nationally, there's all sorts of problems with recycling just ending up in somebody else's landfill.
Absolutely.
So before I go to these brokers, I need to know that I am not paying 300,000, 200,000, whatever the number is, so that I feel good about myself, like, "Oh, man, I'm recycling," and it just ends up in a landfill, or it ends up in India, or China, or in Kansas City's landfills.
The reason.
And I haven't got any of those answers in years, so I'm getting frustrated because I keep asking these questions. I've asked these questions from day one, and I haven't got a response.
May I say? Rather than try to get the cart before the horse, you know, I'm not a politician, but I understand after talking to John that so many of us can't get together to discuss this in a civil manner. So I hesitate to come up with a plan like I did a month or so ago, and nobody understands the plan, nobody really cares, nobody reads it, you know? It's a situation where we all need to get together and figure out how this thing can work rather than why it won't work. Like I said, there's 2,000, more than 2,000 cities in this country doing a pay-for-throw. If you want to throw 14 bags of trash, great, pay for it. If the guy that's voluntarily recycling, he has a half-bag of trash, and he brings it down to the recycle center and puts it in, that guy should get credit for that.
And I've told you I have no stomach for that plan.
Why?
Because I don't see the benefit in that plan. I think we're throwing away the, the system that works.
Recycling.
I'm not against recycling, I'm against pay-as-you-throw, and I've had no plans given to me in any concrete manner.
We would love to give you those plans. If we can figure out a way to get together with that, I don't know, breaking the law, you know?
We can't, we can't.
But you can present these plans to us in detail, and then we can discuss them, but there's still never been a plan.
We'd be, we'd be happy to. You know what? I just went through the week from hell in my family last week.
All right.
Seven years ago, when I started this job, I had jet-black hair. Now, that's a lie, you know, I didn't really. I mean, we've been living this recycling for seven years, John. We've had some support, and we've had no support. But my father said, "If it's the right thing to do, figure it, figure out how to do it." And that's exactly what I'm doing. So I could proudly go to my grandkids and say, "You know, we started that, and we, we did this for our community and our earth," you know?
And, and the thing that I think what recycling, the volunteer recycling effort has done, and I think it's not being recognized, I don't think, is that we have shown that whatever percentage it is, people will support a recycling effort. And we've done what we could to keep it going. At times, it was way too much, and we nearly buried ourselves with it. And now, on top of trying to allow, have a, have, have, have a, an outlet for people who want to recycle to do that, now the city, who has resources, who has the time, who has the manpower, is also looking at us and saying, "Okay, you come up with the plan. You tell us how to do it." I think we've shown.
You've shown that if you give a free service to businesses, businesses will throw away their cardboard to you on a free service.
That they will support.
Now, have you tried asking the businesses to pay for that service yet?
So, when I came here, the businesses were paying Greens, who are charging them, I think.
So you get, so it's a tax break to them?
They were, they were, they were charging businesses. They were charging businesses for an extra container that they could only put cardboard in.
Correct.
And with the, with the understanding that Greens was recycling that. The only thing we ever could tell that Greens was doing was bailing it and then burying it at their facility in Shenwood. That's not recycling. Businesses were paying to have that happen. We came along and said, "Why are you paying for that? We can leave totes here, we'll be happy to collect it and recycle it." And that's when we had, what, 100 businesses volunteer to do that.
Because it was free. And I'm curious how many of them would volunteer for the service if there was a fee?
Okay, let me ask you. Pete's is a good example out there, okay? On the east side of town, they were getting their trash. Cycling since 80% of it is cardboard, and that's all we were taking. They cut their trash pickup to three times.
Right, and they don't pay for that. And so I think we're talking apples and oranges, that I have 30% of Burlington willing to do it for free. When I put a fee on these things, how many people are going to do it? The businesses. Because if we get into businesses, we're charging them a fee. And they can simply say, "You know what? I'm just going to throw it away," right?
Some of them will.
And a lot of them.
So what I, what I'm hearing is that, is that.
She wants to know.
You would rather just wait, don't worry about it, until the landfill closes. Because one of the studies that I saw, that I shared with the council, or I shared with the, with the county that one day, had the Allen County landfill with, what was it, 30-year life expectancy. So you're saying, "Let's push this down to the next generation, and then we'll let them deal with it."
I've been, I've been very open about trash energy. I've ran on it, I lost. Idea's dead. I've been very open about other solutions. Recycling isn't the only solution to the landfill, though.
Let's move on. Joelle has some questions, so let's give some variety here, see what's happening.
I just have a couple of things I want to mention. First of all, just like Mayor French has mentioned at the beginning of this conversation, we are not opposed to recycling. We are in support of it. You said that you've come up with business plans or ideas and documentation. I know of several times that an agenda request has been made on behalf of Allen County Recycling. Our staff has had to go out there and get the documentation. Was it the city of Heston or the, remind me, what city?
Heston, yeah.
Yes.
Where?
Our staff had, it was mentioned by somebody with Allen County Recycling to follow the model of the city of Heston. That's where the ball stopped rolling. Our staff had to go out there and get the documentation to present to us so that we could review it prior to the meeting. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot of things here. First of all, you said that Allen County Recycling has a business account, there's money in that account. You have paid your employee out of your own personal money. Why not pay them out of Allen County, Allen County Recycling? Your co-mingling funds, you just pay them out of what you are getting from your recycling. So you're, I'm getting two different stories, that there is money there, but yet there's not money because we can't pay our employee.
Yeah, well, there's not enough money in the, in the account to do that, quite honestly.
Okay.
And I bought the baler, and all the equipment that we're using is.
Right, and, and I understand that. And, and I do know that, you know, the city, a very minor part is, we helped with some electrical, with that new building.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm not saying that you don't. I, I am not. I will mention, my daughter lives in the Wichita area, and the city of Wichita requires you to pay for recycling. There is no choice, no option to opt out. There are three waste management companies in the city of Wichita that do waste management. One out of the three has completely discontinued recycling, the recycling program. She actually lives in Rose Hill. It is an option, and they do have to pay for the, I think it's every other week. And it runs approximately $18 a month on top of their normal trash pickup. Let's see here.
Okay.
And we, you know, back to the plans, this is my last point. We just have not been presented with a viable plan or program so that we can do our due diligence and work in with the county and the city to see what the ideas are. You know, it's, it's not up to us to come up with all of the answers. We need the public, Allen County Recycling in particular, to present us with a viable plan so that we can go forward. And that's all I have, Mayor.
That plan needs, or they could make a plan, they need to know whether or not they have two employees, one from the county, one from the city. Do they have that?
It's hard for, I understand what you're saying, Vicki, and, and it's really hard for us to make that commitment if we can't, we can't commit to something if we don't know what it's going to cost us, what the plan is.
You can come up with a plan of what the two employees would do.
Yeah.
You can do all of that stuff, and then we can discuss it. Because if the two employees are just taking over the commercial side, I don't want to put a city employee just to do commercial business.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't charge for commercial pickup. I'm a, I'm a commercial business. I have to dispose of my own, which, by the way, I do recycle through my salon. But we, as a, as a commercial business, I do not have the luxury of city trash pickup. So.
Sure. I feel like we're kind of talking around the stuff, but, which is good in some ways, but I'd like to, to work towards a plan, like something that we can do. I, I support recycling. I'm generally of the opinion that we should, if we're going to do something, we should start small, and we should, should plan it well. So putting forth an idea, I mean, if this is going to be a county-wide project, we could do, like, we'll just look at a plan and evaluate the cost for this idea. So let's say we have in each of the major population centers in the county, so Lahar, Humboldt, Iowa, Gas, a local collection point where citizens can bring their trash of their own volition. The businesses, we, we would need to, I, I think, charge them. Like, the city and the county can't compete, we need to charge them. And so if, and so we need to get an idea before we would commit to anything of who's going to pay and what they're going to pay. And so you'll need to do that. Like, because it's, if it's, the city cannot just go, and the county cannot just go pick up and compete, you know, for free. So the businesses will have to pay, so you'll need to do that. And we'll need to get an idea of how many hours it's going to take, so that we can total up what it's going to cost to collect from the businesses and from the local collection point, and then how long it's going to take to travel, bring it back. So then we can come up with a plan for, this is, this is just cardboard only, let's say we just, just look at that, and then come up with, this is who's going to pay, and this is the cost, these are the revenue we're going to bring in, which we know is probably not going to, you know, revenue from the businesses and revenue from the sale of the cardboard, which we realize it's not going to be break even. That would be great, but it's probably not. But we need to look at, see like what that true cost is going to be. And so those are the things for me that I would need to know before doing the program. And I think that could be a viable program, at least a start to it.
Didn't Matt come up with the numbers for the local city one at, one of these, just to have the, the station?
Well, they're already doing it, so they should know.
We made it as a utility, boy, 367 popped into my head.
Matt, Matt's already come up with the idea of, we've talked about that, of putting, of putting just two or so dumpsters, you know, recycling dumpsters in town, and Matt had those numbers.
Oh, we did that, no one got back with us on that.
Right. Yeah, those were the multi-ones, you know, with glass. Just, just the cardboard, and those bins already exist, like, they have them. So we could use the existing equipment and, and just collect the data on hours, like a true hour time sheet, to find out what that, what cost would be, and then what those two employees would be doing.
Again, I didn't want to get the cart before the horse, because, you know, I think it's something that we all should be able to sit down and try to figure out, but I'll be happy to come up with a plan.
And just that, nothing else.
Yeah, and it's basically like you were saying, Nick, the county, they provide one person, we take the totes out, put them out there, just like we're doing now. The people at Moran or wherever it is, they put their stuff in, the county goes out, picks it up once a week, brings it back. And the nice thing about this is, this is going to remain voluntary, okay? Nobody seems to like mandatory. So if it's voluntary that people recycle, we'll keep a recycling place open to where people can bring their stuff when they want to, or if not, they need to pay more for having their trash picked up. I mean, that's, those are the basics about any plan that we would come up with. And I don't, it's not, it's not going to be expensive, certainly not going to be $290,000. I think maybe one of the biggest mistakes we made, I made, was inviting Todd down here to tell you how they did it in, in Burlington or.
But that's what I would like to see, just a simple, just this, just those very, and then also, we'll need to, you'll need to figure out, and we'll have to have it, like, you know, if, if, who's keeping the money from the sale? Like, I mean, I would think if the city and the county are going to put forth money, I, I mean, ideally, they would get that back for that investment, but I also realize that some of that is if it's worked done by the organization, but that will need to be clearly delineated.
That one, that one employee for the city, one employee for the county, the way we had it worked out before, those two would work to bail, okay? And one person would be in charge of the voluntary recycle place one day a week, and the other one would be another day a week. Certain hours, people could bring their recyclables in. There's a lot of details we've already thought about, we just have not put them on paper.
But just that one program is what I would like to see.
Yep, I agree. It needs to be.
I would also, I would also like to see other towns that will be participating in this, that they have a financial, you know, a piece of the pie as far as we're getting paid from them, or they are providing a payment for the service.
They're paying their county taxes.
So are we.
But then, but then the question becomes, Iowa's paying double, because I pay my county taxes, I pay my city taxes, but now I'm technically funding two employees. That doesn't make sense compared to everybody else.
For other, for other cities and townships to participate in it for. For other, for other cities and townships to participate in it for free.
We're not adding two employees, okay?
You're asking for two employees, you're asking for a county and a city employee.
I can, I can point blank say, there's not a spare city employee that we can give up every day of the week, or even every other day of the week.
Not right now.
Not right now.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, can I have the floor for a minute?
Yes.
I think everybody's got some good opinions here around the table. The way I see this right now is in line with what Nick's saying. If we, I think everybody needs to know how much it would cost to basically run the center you've already got. And then, and the other big question is, is the material, I think some people really want to know, is the material being recycled and not thrown in a ditch, right? So if we had those two things, I think that that would get us on to the next step, because I've worked a bunch of numbers, we're not going to make money at this. We may have, we're likely to have a potential cost adder to make it work. And once we know the math to get to that, we can find a source for that money. But the rest, to me, that's how it breaks down. Right now, other communities may or may not get involved. We may have to work diligently to figure out where to get the money, or where to send the fees, but we don't have enough information yet. So I feel like if we just start with what you've got, like I said, that's my advice, and then we can just kind of get off top dead center here.
I'd have to agree with, I hope I'm going down the path you're going, to not necessarily dismantle what you've been doing for six years, but.
Right.
Yeah. See, that's why we would like to meet with whomever is going to make these decisions, because we know what works and what doesn't work. We've been doing it for seven years, you know? Some things just flat don't work. And I think we could be, provide some decent guidance into something like this, you know, whether you adopt it or not. So, oh, that's a good point. We've worked hard at it. We have, yeah, we have a couple of young people, and I still think they are the people that, it's like they used to say, if you can get them used to drinking milk in grade school, you know, they'll be lifetime milk drinkers. And it's kind of the same way with, with recycling. So Bella?
Yes.
Is the president, yes, of the.
Hello, I'm Bella Ramming. I'm your STUCO president of Iola High School. All my life I've been here, all but two years. I'm definitely not as experienced as the gorgeous faces around here, but I'm kind of just here to talk on a more younger perspective. I think from what I've heard here, it has to start somewhere. And that's something I've realized through being, like, in the position of a leader. It is definitely going to be a number crunch. This is something I can't answer with all the questions you may have, but it does have to start somewhere. And there's always the chance to, it may be rough the first year, it may be costly, but the next year gets better. You always find ways to improve. They said they've been doing this for six years, I've heard. That's a good start. That's, you're not starting out some crazy project that's going to completely wipe you guys out. But just about, like, the high school, I actually really, really do like recycling. The two years I went to a different school, we actually did recycle. And in, like, one day, we had projects that took up the entire bin. And it was a, oopsies, it was about a three-foot bin that's like two feet deep, you know? So that's how much paper can get wasted in one project at one school. And the high school still does projects like that. I think, and I may be out of position to say this, are schools an option here? I feel like if you guys are wanting to expand this, it really should start with your schools. It's, it should start with your youth, because schools, kids are not going to have a problem recycling. It's going to be a part of their routine, and then they're going to go through their life thinking about this. I recycle back in fifth and sixth grade, and I still, I still have the thought of, oh, I really don't like wasting paper. I actually worked on a project for the STUCO thing of my brother, who's a freshman for his orientation, and I have a huge scrap full of pile in my room, and I have nowhere to put it. And I think if you can get to your youth quick enough, get to your schools, I think there's multiple, excuse me, multiple cities here, so I can't speak on them. But if that's a viable option, talking to your schools, I would be willing to help however I can. I would absolutely come here to speak on those. I can absolutely get anything through to the administration that needs to be brought to their attention, if there needs to be anything. I just think it should really be up for consideration for however it needs to happen. I definitely know that money is a problem, but it does start with volunteer stuff. Schools can do so much. I heard a lot of the schools at our workshop, they do a whole community service day. And so if you guys are looking for more help for more of the population, Iola's population is youth and seniors predominantly, correct? So I think if you want to get more involvement, start it in the youth, because then they go through their life, and that's going to branch out to the homes, and that's going to get more of an impact. So I would absolutely love to hear more about this for the schools. And again, I am Bella. Hi. If you guys ever need something to go to the high school, please come to me, because this is a matter that I really do care about, and I would absolutely love to see flourish in this town. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bella.
Thank you, Bella. Very well said.
I, I would like to, I would like to mention, Dr. Lefler was going to be here tonight, but she has meetings and she could not attend. But Brox?
Hello, I'm Brock Sullbrader. I'm a freshman this year in high school, and I really do not know much about recycling. I haven't read into it a lot, but my dad worked for Steve for seven, eight years, and I can say that Steve does devote a lot of time, just himself a lot of the time, to recycling. And, I mean, I've done it, like, whenever I was little and stuff, me and my dad used to go and stuff like that. I'd just be in there to listen to music with him. But not really help or anything, but I don't know, just from my perspective of it, I really think that if we just have a little bit more help from the county and a little bit more money being pushed to what Steve is doing, it can really impact the county and stuff. And it can, I understand a setback with money, but I feel like that would have us not have to spend money on things like landfills, because it would prevent stuff like trash and waste and stuff being put in those. So we wouldn't have to worry about that if we focused more on what he's doing with recycling. That's really all I have. I don't know much. But I do support Steve and Dan in this.
Thank you.
Hi, do we have any more questions, or?
Yeah.
I really would like to get something done as quickly as possible, if we can.
I'm not sure, but I, I think, I think what Nick has said and Joel has said, and keeping it simple is sort of what we've discussed from the beginning of any discussion. You know, you've got two, two different government entities coming together, trying to decide the best plan and, you know, push to shove here. To me, the perfect world for this situation would be if the county took the lead, simply because they have ownership over the landfill. And if communities, you know, adopted, received their idea, it would almost make it simpler than bringing two entities together, trying to decide what's best, you know? Because it'd be pretty simple for the city to sit there and say whether or not we want to do it within the city limits of Iola. But we have to add to that. We're looking at the county, and that would be the hope, that it would be adopted countywide. But I do think keeping it simple to start out and having some pretty basic idea of income, and then attached to that, if the city's going to provide to employees, what is the business model for your recycling company? I mean, what's going to become of that? And, and then we've probably got some legal issues with, you know, are they a city employee, are they a county employee? What if our pay goes up quicker than the county guy, and they're hired at the same time? That's going to cause bad blood. That's where I say, I kind of wish the county would run with it and say, okay, here's what we're going to do, is the city in for this much, is Moran this much, et cetera. That'd almost make it simpler. But I think we need your, your gentleman's idea on, is the baler for use by these people that come in? What is the liability? Those type of things need to be figured out as well.
I've lived in a couple of communities where the main city was smaller than, than Iola, and I think overall the counties were smaller than Allen County. And they didn't have an incentive until they didn't have a landfill. And then all of a sudden, the incentive was huge. Ask two thousand people, they, they picked up curbside recycling every week, once a week, because it made sense for them, because that lowered what they, their out, their, their payout to the county for calling, you know, taking the trash to the transfer station. We don't have that incentive here, because we still have the, still have the landfill. I, I just think it would be really worthwhile for the city and the county to look at it, put some effort and time and energy into it, and figure out, if nothing else, how can we keep this landfill going as, as long as we can? Talking with the county, learned that, what, thirteen other counties bring stuff to the Allen County landfill now. At one point in time, every county had a landfill. That's when our landfill would have lasted for 200 years. It's not the case now. We've got 13 other counties that bring their stuff into our landfill. And the other thing that I learned when I was talking with the county earlier, when, was that their meeting? That makes money for the county, those fees. It's a moneymaker. And, and I would like to think that I've helped the county out in being able to accept as much trash as they can, if, if we take care of things at home.
Okay, to this end, Steve. We were promised a meeting at the May 12 meeting as City Council, promised a meeting between the county and the city, and we have yet to have one. And I'd like to know how legally we could do that, you know? Were people that are interested in recycling? Okay. Can we set a date for that, rather than just?
I thought that's what this meeting was.
Meeting is, we have both representation.
I'm representing the county. We're doing it in open meeting the way it should be done.
So my point, John, being, when we come up with this detailed plan, when are we going to meet next to talk about it? That's, that's what I asked.
Present it.
We can't talk about it until you present one.
Present it as an agenda item.
In two weeks, we'll have the detailed.
John, can you be back in two weeks if we have an agenda item?
We have our budget hearings.
We have, we have our budget hearings, so.
We're going to have ours right after, next day.
Can I ask a question, Steve, what, what you want from staff? Because I just want to make sure we bring you what you're asking. So what I've heard.
Pretty much not staff.
Well, I'm just going to summarize it. What I've, what I've heard is, you'd like for them to bring their plan, what they're paying out, what they're bringing in, where they take it, and the operation in general, just to keep it the same as what it was, right? That's what you're, what you're asking for.
John?
Essentially us taking over the recycling center, then?
Assisting.
Bernie should help. You've got to justify to the people why we're doing what we're doing. And I'm happy to do that, and we're happy to support you. I want that understood. But you've never came with a solid plan that I can justify to our taxpayers. You've got to bring one. You've got to bring one to the table.
We'll do. That's a good, good point.
Dan, you have something else? In the mic, please.
I'm, I'm still trying. I would just say, sort of what I said, previous, and maybe Cory said it more correct than I did, is what you are doing now, and if you are given a gift for tomorrow, to make what you're doing, jumping forward to a, a plan that doesn't exist now, dismantling what you have. I don't think, that's not what I'm looking for.
We're not trying to reinvent the wheel by asking, you know, we're just asking for help, that's what we're doing.
One, one step, and then the next step. Yes.
All right. Anything else? Oh, George.
Oh, all I hear is money. Here we go again. Who's going to make the most money, it sounds like? Well, I volunteered. Steve's volunteered. He built that machine, cost him fourteen thousand dollars to begin with. He could be doing a lot of other things. So just the other week, I know who, where they got that building. How many of you, show of hands, how many of you have been down there? How many of you have been down there and walked inside? And you sat around, and all they're asking is for a little bit of help. Everybody else is getting grants, why can't they get a grant? Have you all been down and seen the trees growing on the roof? You can hardly see when you go in. There's no cement, hardly. Somebody's going to fall, just a matter of time. But the biggest kick was, just the other week, there was a tree down in the middle of the road. You know who went down and cut that tree? Some young girl who volunteered. So she went home and got her father's shins on. I called around and asked, whose road is it? Well, the city says it ain't our road. Well, I see the police cars go up there sometimes. And I also see big chuck holes down there, too. Mr. Works, he ordered a rock and stuff, nobody put it in. Now, I've seen a lot of guys standing around who work for the county and the city. I've had it. I'm a taxpayer. I'm going to have my say. I've been to the commissioner's meeting three times. I'm not going back. I just had enough. And tonight, it's the same thing. I've been in this Kansas for 46 years. Like that, when they bombed Pearl Harbor, Mayor. So I think they deserve to be heard. It's always, it's always over money. We have no trouble getting any money or anything to build air hangars. We can't even hire enough people. What are you going to do when they, if they do get here? Where are they going to live? How they tell me the man, well, I don't know, that, he owns the gas stations. Okay? I don't know how many he owns, or he owns quite a few. Well, it's his ability. Well, we sure pay enough for gas all that time. He could help with it. I would even volunteer to get in the other part of it, besides getting the trash, separating the trash and everything. One other thing, the landfill. Stuff over here, and it costs 300, I don't know, whatever it is out there, and they're still not done. I was a judge at one time, and I had prisoners. I talked to the sheriffs. You know, they're just sitting up there planning their next break-in or whatever they're going to do. Is there any way that we can get, you know, some of those prisoners up there to pick up the paper and stuff like that there? I said, the wind blows, you know? Start, first of all, you buy good meals from Forestine's at the time, you take them out there, and you explain it to them. There ain't no. Ain't no use running, they're gone away, 'cause we're gonna catch it, and then we're gonna put you back where we gotta pump sunlight to you, through the tube. So, nobody ran off. Oh, they're gonna get hurt, they're gonna do this, and they're gonna do that. Well, they did do that, and the, lot of them. Then, they cut that out. And Steve, and Preacher, and everybody else, Mrs. Gilpin, and Mr. Works, and everybody, Mrs. Hauser. We gotta do something. I separate my trash from my, you know, from the bottles and all that stuff. They save a lot. And, those guys who done that job. Upset, and I guess you can tell. And, just like the ambulance, anybody needs to be paid, those EMT guys. How many of you have an EMT at 2:00 in the morning, live out in the country? Boy, when they're coming down the road, just look out the way, 'cause they do the job, believe me. I can't even get my, people go by, and they see signs down, they won't get out, they're To save, but I'm behind Steve and everybody else, to make this thing work. Tired hearing about the economics. Economics, stuff, man, activities, devoted to attaining the means. So, that's economics 101.
Well, we asked a timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot about the budget hearings.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, George. We asked about a timeframe, so obviously not on the 25th, 'cause that's the, the budget hearing. Look at the one after that.
Put it on, as long as I have the information to put in the packet, which is, you know, you know? So, if I have it the Thursday, the Wednesday before our meeting, I'm good. Yeah, I'll get it to you. As soon as we get it, John, I'll send it to you.
Okay. Please, some help with some figures, 'cause I don't like employment costs and stuff like
I have a question. You have the figures that it's cost ya, not me. I can't provide you figures of your employees and what it's cost ya. That's what they ask for, not my employees or the city employees.
Well, but what I was trying to do is say, okay. We can do that on our end, but this is gonna be your thing. This is not a staff thing. And, the county end, I couldn't tell you what their pay scale is if you paid me. We can run 20 hours on, on one of our solid waste handlers, is that would be the closest thing we have. This'd be creating a position we don't have. So, we can run those numbers. That won't be a big deal.
Thanks, Steve.
And, you're, just so we're clear, the date is not the 25th, right? It's the first meeting in September, is the one you were talking about. Okay.
I'd like it to be that, because we both have budget here. They'll have one, we'll have one next day.
8th, is September 8th. So, Wednesday prior to, Steve?
How much time do we need for our executives?
How much time do we need in this exec?
Being over there's got it.
We'll get to move on. If you could keep quiet as you guys exit, since we're still conducting business. Thanks for attending, and we'll see you in about three, four weeks.
Mayor, City Council recessed an executive session for 10 minutes. So, KSA 75-43196, acquisition of property, the purpose of the executive session is to discuss the purchase of private property, and shall include the mayor, council, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and attorney. The regular meeting shall reconvene in the City Council Chamber at 7:45 a.m.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?